This special meeting of the Waco ISD School Board is hereby called to order at 12 o'clock. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this afternoon have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I ask that you turn your cellphone to silent if you have not already done so. We appreciate the time you have taken to join us for your interest in the Waco ISD district. Next is public comments, and we have none. First item on the agenda is Consider and Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the 2023-24 Instructional Calendar presented by Dr. Corn Blum.
Good afternoon, trustees. How are you? Okay, so I won't go over. You have the memo, I think, that points out the particulars of the calendar and the dates. I just want to share a little bit about the process and how this happens. And so each year, of course, we are tasked with creating instructional calendar for the upcoming year. Our Quality District Advisory Committee gives input on that. And so we started the process way back in November. And the first draft calendars, we began with three, were taken to the QDAC, that's what we call it for short, in November. We got their feedback. We actually made some adjustments during that meeting moving forward. They were asked to take those draft calendars out to their communities, to their schools, because on our QDAC, we have community members, teachers, business partners, it's an array of folks. And so they were asked to get feedback, to bring that back in January. And so we had a meeting January 9th where they brought feedback to us. We made a few additional adjustments, and then the calendars opened for voting on January 10th. And so they were out for voting January 10th through the 21st. And that was communicated to the community, to staff in various ways. It was on our district website. The Waco Trib did a news story on it, I think around, I don't know, mid-January, January 13th maybe. Each campus website, and then some reminders were sent out. I would like to say that overall, our voting increased this year, which is really good. Last year, we only had 139 community votes. And so this year, let me get the exact number. This year, we had a total of... I've lost my amount. But we were up from 139. We had 1,165 total votes overall. And then last year, or this, last year, we only had 803 total votes collectively. So our votes were increased, and that was good. And so I think our communications department did a really nice job of really putting that out there. So there are a couple of things I just want to mention about this calendar in particular. It's very similar to the calendar that we have this year, the one that we're proposing. So one of the things you'll see during the year is we still do have a number of professional development days, as well as the protected planning days. We have heard from teachers that those protected planning days have been beneficial to them throughout the year, so long as they are protected and they get to use those for planning, which is what our criteria has been. Also, the professional development days help us a lot because we struggle with substitutes. So there was a time in the past to where we might pull, say, all 5th grade ELAR teachers off campus, or to come over to the district during the school day for training, and we just can't get coverage for classes now. And so it's so much harder. So we sort of have to build those in and be intentional. And we know that's so much more important now because we have a lot of new teachers to us. You know, since COVID, we have a pretty young teaching force. So that's important, and we're also trying to accomplish a lot of things. Winter break, all of those things are very similar. Another thing that we do is we really try to look at, and we don't try, we do, look at our universities, our community colleges around us, and we try to be in sync with them. Because, of course, for MCC, we have our kids in dual credit, and then, of course, we have parents who work in both locations. And so it's helpful when we stay aligned across, you know, our entities, across our counties. So that is how we arrive at where we are. And so we had three calendars out for votes. Calendar two, if you were, if you remember back to the voting, calendar two is actually the calendar that we're proposing to you today. Calendar one, the difference that was with it was it didn't have the planning days built in for the teachers. And so that was the difference in it. Calendar three was similar to calendar two, with just some minor changes. But calendar two is the calendar that we're presenting. And just overall, looking at the votes, calendar one had 463 votes, which was about 40%. Calendar two, 531, which was 46%. And calendar three, 171 votes, which was 14%. So we are recommending that we approve the calendar as presented today, unless you have questions that you would like for me to answer.
I just have a comment. I think the teachers are going to be very excited about that Christmas break, and a lot of the parents are probably going to be upset about the extended time off into January, but I would be very excited about that.
Well, and one, it, we don't return until much later, but the way it falls, this year, we got out on the 16th, on that Friday, was our last day, and our break began that next Monday. But the way it falls for this calendar, it, that week before is pretty early. And so we come in, we'll get finals knocked out at the secondary level, those things, during those first three days, and then get, I think it's the 21st on. But we tacked the days on to January, so we still have just as many days.
I know you...
Sorry, go ahead.
I know you've probably addressed this in other places, but I agree that teachers need time to have, for themselves, to work and to plan. I also know and hear that that's really challenging for parents who have kids that cannot be at school, but both parents are at work. Have we had any thought or answers towards helping mitigate that problem, or do we just communicate to parents, we need to figure it out?
Well, so we do have some after-school programs that run, and those after-school programs, like if you have the Y and those things, they still, you know, take students on those days. As of yet, we haven't discussed anything further. Kind of had to see what was going to be approved and think about that. It has been brought up, and so I do, I know that concern. But as of me standing here right now, I don't have a solution for that at this moment.
Some campuses, I don't know all the details of it, we were just talking about it this morning. Some campuses did do some things to mitigate. You know, some campuses, it's a bigger issue than on others. But the calendar itself is a really nice balance of helping our teachers manage their workloads. Two years ago, we had a shorter school day by 15 minutes, and we didn't have the built-in planning days for teachers. We ended up during, and I can't remember if that's the year, we ended up adding some remote learning days...
In January.
To help balance their stress and what all they were managing during COVID. Last year, we went back to the longer school day, adding those 15 minutes back because, I mean, taking them off. Sorry, I said that backwards. Taking those off because the teachers wanted the shorter workday. And then this year, we went back to the longer day to give them the planning days. And we've gotten a lot of great feedback from teachers that this was a really good calendar for them, and it really kind of provided that opportunity to catch up along the way, and things didn't snowball on them and create additional stress for them. So I know that's a challenge for our parents, and we want to thank our parents and the community for all the input that they provided. We did have community representatives on the DEWIC, and we just appreciate our parents helping us find that balance. As you know, it's been hard to recruit teachers, and teacher stress has been at an all-time high. Some districts are moving towards a four-day week. We don't, we don't feel like that's something that would be good for Waco ISD in our community. I certainly don't think that would be good for instruction, but I think this strikes a nice balance for us to take care of our staff and keep stress down while we're really going through a tremendous teacher shortage.
If I could add two things to what Dr. King Cannon said. So when we started the calendar process last year, we started with three. But based on teacher feedback about the remote learning, when I think Dr. King Cannon was doing listening tours, we heard that they liked that. But we had taken the 15 minutes off to be able to, you know, which didn't allow us to do that. And so we actually came back and added a fourth calendar last year.
As a result of listening.
That, that extended the day by those 15 minutes again to say, you know, to put it out there, to say, okay, if this is, if you want this as an option, and that is the calendar that actually won the vote last year. And the other three had the shortened day, and they didn't. But you said something else about, at the end, oh, anyways, it'll come to me in a second, I'm sure. But I will say this too, though, about, to your question. It has come up in QDAC as well, and they have asked us to think about creative ways that may be on those days. So I don't know what will come out of those discussions there, or if anything will, but that committee's talking about that point as well. And so they had some ideas too. So I don't know where that will go, but it is, it has been brought up in other places.
I'd encourage you to keep pushing that question. I know with one child, it's expensive, but two and three and four children needing childcare, that's, that's an extreme expense for some folks. And so I would hope that we could help folks find ways to mitigate that cost and inconvenience.
I would just echo, echo those same words. I think a lot of our parents struggled with childcare this year. I definitely think the planning days are necessary, but I also know that it's putting a toll on some of our parents. So I would love to hear some creative ways to kind of mitigate the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. My kids are grown now, but I've always been in the school business and same thing, you know, having to juggle this. Yeah.
I'll ask, you did separate the staff votes versus parent or community votes and the tallies that we got, but were they weighted the same, like the one that one is actually just one of the most total votes?
We literally combined. That's correct. Yep. They were very close, actually. So pretty close on, so for staff, calendar one had 256 votes, and calendar two for community had 207. And then calendar two for community had 182, and for staff, it had 349. Calendar three was kind of an outlier. So they were very close in their voting. It did look as though community favored one maybe a little bit more, but, but it was still pretty tight.
Any more questions? I entertain a motion to approve the 2023-24 instructional calendar.
I'll move that we approve the 2023-24 instructional calendar as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Angelo, second. And so all in favor for the calendar?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Decision passes. Thank you. Now, we'll move to item number four, review and discuss the 2021-22 external audit results and take appropriate action regarding the annual financial report from the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2022, presented by Ms. Davis and Mr. DeBurro.
Do you want to introduce them? So we have finally finished audit, was really, had some new things this year, and a lot of, you know, we had fires, we had insurance, we had new GADBI statements to implement, and also we have bonds issued and lots of new things for this audit. So, you know, we came out very well. We have our auditor here, who is the senior manager with Weaver and John DeBurro, and he's going to do a short presentation for you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to meet with you this afternoon to go through the results of the fiscal year 2022 audit. As Cheryl mentioned, I'm John DeBurro, I'm the audit partner. This is my second year on the audit of the district. And I've got a presentation to go through with you. And before I start, I'd just like to thank Cheryl and all of her finance staff for all of the hard work in making this a successful audit. There are a few things included in my, my presentation. I'll try not to take too much of your time. Starts off with a brief introduction to our firm and the audit process, goes through the audit results, and then some of our required communications under the, under the audit standards. And then I've got some financial highlight slides with numbers that come directly from this year and the prior year's financial statements. If anyone has any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. If you're not familiar with Weaver, we're headquartered out of Texas, but we're a national firm, and we concentrate on audits of school districts and municipalities, as well as other organizations. And as I mentioned, I served as the audit partner, and Justin Herbert was the senior associate that was in charge of the day-to-day fieldwork. And in our audit process, we actually started the audit last summer, where we started planning and we came out to perform interim fieldwork, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in just a moment. We came back in November to perform the majority of our fieldwork, and we issued our auditor's report on the financial statements last week. And we have to audit in accordance with various standards. We audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. The generally accepted auditing standards require us to express an opinion on your financial statements based on our audit procedures, where the government audit procedures add an additional layer where we have to issue a written report on your internal control of a financial reporting and on compliance. And in addition, once again, this year, we had to perform a single audit. So the testing of compliance with major federal financial assistance programs comes under the, what's called the Uniform Guidance. And then we also perform tests of the district's compliance with things such as the Public Funds Investment Act, as well as various TEA compliance requirements. So there's a lot going on during the audit, and we use the risk-based approach to the audit. Obviously, we can't audit every, every transaction in the district. There are thousands and thousands of transactions. So we try to identify various areas that are of higher risk and tailor our audit procedures and our resources more heavily in those areas. I've listed some of those on this slide, things like federal and state revenues and related receivables, and compliance with the various requirements of those grants, and also the state foundation aid, construction, and bidding and purchasing requirements. And I mentioned that we came out to perform interim fieldwork in, in September, and, I'm sorry, in August. And when we come out, the fiscal year isn't closed out yet, so we concentrate on control work. So we look at things that aren't subject to final balances yet. We look at the various significant transaction cycles, such as payroll, cash disbursements, cash receipts and things, and we get an understanding of the process. We identify controls, and if we had seen any weaknesses in those controls, then we would have brought those to management's attention, but I'm happy to report that there were none. And we also walk through transactions where we actually take transaction and walk through to make sure that those controls that we've been communicated about are actually in place and operating as designed. So that's what we concentrate on during interim fieldwork. And then we also start doing some of our compliance work, which involves testing with compliance requirements of the Public Funds Investment Act. We start getting into TEA compliance, as well as some of the single audit testing, which I'll go into a little bit more. During the final fieldwork, we did a number of things. We test the balances and the, and the activity for the fiscal year using a variety of techniques, such as sampling, analytical procedures, and vouching to actual source documentation. We test bid and procurement, and we also test controls over payroll and cash disbursements using a sample of, selecting a sample of transactions. Finally, what you want to hear, the audit results. I've got good news here. We, we've issued three reports, and the first of which is our independent auditor's report on the financial statements for fiscal year 2022. And we've issued what's known as an unmodified opinion, and that is a clean opinion. That means that we feel that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. The second report that we've issued is part of the single audit, and it's the independent auditor's report on internal control of a financial reporting and compliance. And I'm happy to report that there were no findings, so there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified, and there were no instances of non-compliance. And the final report that we've issued is specific to the, the single audit testing of the major federal programs. And in that report, we issue our opinion on the district's compliance over those major federal programs. And I'm happy to report that we issued an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the district complied in all material respects in accordance with the compliance requirements of each program. And there were no findings of, as far as no deficiencies in internal control over those compliance requirements. So it was a, it was a great audit overall, and that's, hats off to Cheryl and her, her staff for doing a great job. The next section goes through our required communications, and I won't go over all of this because some of it I've already spoken to. But one thing in our auditor's communication, which this kind of summarizes a lot of what you have in a separate letter that you received, is that we need to communicate whether there were any significant audit adjustments that needed to be made as a result of our audit procedures, and whether there were any, what they call, uncorrected misstatements, or ones that we passed on because we felt that they were immaterial. I'm happy to report that there were none of either, either kind. Some of the other things that are in that letter talk about various estimates that are embodied in the financial statements. We have to test the underlying assumptions of those estimates to make sure that they're reasonable. The most significant ones are the estimate for state foundation revenue. Even though it's a revenue, it really is an estimate because it's a number that changes constantly through the year, based upon information that TEA receives on attendance and taxes. So that was all reasonable, and the allowance for uncollectible taxes was also reasonable. We noted in our report that there were no material errors or irregularities. There were no transactions entered into, that there was no guidance for, really, we had no difficulties or disagreements in management as far as the application of accounting principles, no independence issues. And there was one new auditing standard that the district had to implement this year. It's called GADBI 87, or leases, and it required the district to report leases on the, the balance sheet for the first time this year. The district had, had a couple of leases that required a, what's known as a right-to-use asset to be put on, as well as a, an offsetting lease liability. This is the first year of that. And then I finally have some financial highlights, as I mentioned, that I wanted to go over with you. And the first two slides are directly related to the governmental funds revenues, and the revenues totaled $248.3 million this year. And that was a significant increase over the previous year, a $32 million increase over fiscal '21. And most of that was attributable to a $13.9 million increase in federal revenues, as well as a $25.2 million increase in local revenues. And a lot of that local revenue increase had to do with the insurance recoveries that the district experienced this year. And if you look at this next slide, you can see the, the increases in the various revenue sources. So the local revenues went up from 93.3 million to 118.5 this year. Again, a lot of that was related to the insurance recoveries, and the federal program revenues increasing from 33.7 to 47.6 this year. State revenue decreased by 7.1 million. And similarly, these next two slides go through the governmental funds expenditures, which totaled 245.3 million this past year. That was a $29.8 million increase over last year. And really, there were several areas that were, you know, contributing to that increase, the biggest of which was a $16.9 million increase in facilities acquisition and construction with the capital projects going on. Obviously, the capital outlay increased this, this past year. And again, you can see side by side, I know this is a little busy of a, of a table, but you can see the facilities acquisition and construction, which increased from just $6.6 million last year to $23.5 million this past year. And this slide just looks at the, the district's governmental funds fund balance, which totaled $267 million this year. That was a significant increase over the previous year. And most of that $267 million is in the capital projects fund. The capital project fund makes up $201.5 million of that balance. And similarly, the increase in fund balance this year overall for all the funds was $204.8 million. And most of that was due to the issuance of the bonds this year for the school building, the $189.5 million. So that increased fund balance. And it's just because of the timing of the bond proceeds being received this year, and then they'll be spending on those bonds over the next year or two, which will probably bring the, the fund balance back down. Overall, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is the portion of fund balance that doesn't have any restrictions on it, is $45.7 million, and that represents 28.1% of the general fund expenditures, which is considered healthy. And finally, the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the district, had a favorable budgetary variance when we look at the budget versus the actual performance of $13.9 million. And the majority of that is a net of two things. Revenues actually came under budget by $4.3 million. A lot of that had to do with the state funding, which, which was under budget due to, I guess, a number of factors, including decreases in, in attendance. Expenditures, however, were also under budget by $19.3 million due to savings in, across many areas. And in a nutshell, is, is my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
At the very beginning, on how we were rated, can you just kind of, are there just two possibilities in the rating, good and bad, or are there levels of that? I mean, I know that you said that the, maybe the first slide in all those three areas, we received a certain rating. But is that four out of five? Is that as good as you can get versus three other options?
As far as the, the opinion on the financial statement?
Yes.
I would say that the majority of, of districts do receive an unmodified opinion. However, it was, you know, it speaks to the finance department, the fact that we didn't have any audit adjustments to get to that point. You know, there are some districts that have a lot of adjusting journal entries required to get to the number...
Right, right.
... on the financial statement, and that could be indicative of deficiencies in internal control, material weaknesses.
Sure.
So those two things together, you know, speak highly of, of the district's...
Yeah. I didn't ask the question right. Is unmodified as good as we could have gotten?
If you had gotten a, if you had gotten a qualified opinion, it could be a lot of reasons.
Okay.
You know, it could be, there are what they call qualified opinions, a disclaimer of opinion. If we, if the records were in such bad shape that we couldn't audit them and we had to disclaimer opinion, that, that's as bad as it gets.
But unmodified is a highest.
Yeah, unmodified used to be called an unqualified opinion, which sounds funny. It sounds like you're unqualified to do your job, but, but it just, that's, that's a name for a clean opinion. Yeah.
Any more questions or comments?
Can I applaud our financial team? I think for those of us on the board, the financial implications of this district are top of mind for us all the time. I was reminded in the newspaper this morning that we are the third highest employer in this county, that this institution is huge. And the work that you guys are doing to keep us in a healthy place financially, we really appreciate that. Cheryl is behind that poll, but Cheryl, I'm making eye contact with you through the poll, so I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll just second that. I mean, I knew, we knew that going into the year, we were going to have less revenue from the state than what we had hoped or anticipated and that we were going to have to make adjustments accordingly. Keeping up with all of that, I can't do a great job by myself of keeping up with my own accounts. I really appreciate the responsibility taken to do such a clean and fine job of our financials when there's so much at stake. But specifically in a year that it was harder to manage those expenses because of lower revenues. That, that in and of itself is, is remarkable. So thank the whole team for us. Thank you for giving them the, I guess, the pat on the back. They did the work. You just affirmed it. So thank you for the work in that as well.
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept the financial and compliance report for the year ending August 31st, 2022 as presented.
Move that we accept the auditor's report as presented.
Second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? No. Passage unanimously. Now we go now to announcements by Elizabeth Cox.
Good afternoon, trustees. It's a pleasure to see you on a Thursday afternoon. Just a few quick announcements. A good opportunity to share some of the big things going on. Today, University High School's Vito program, that is our tax preparation partnership with Baylor and our students over at University High School, I know many of you are familiar with. Those services kick off today. They'll run from now through April 13th on Tuesdays and Thursdays, 4:30 to 6:30. This is the 19th year for that program and I'm really proud of the work that it, it does and the services it provides to our community. Also wanted to flag for you that Guaca is hosting a community health fair coming up on Friday, February 3rd at 9:00 AM. It's a great partnership with students and healthcare providers and they'll be facilitating some important screenings and have great information. So again, 9:00 AM, Friday, February 3rd, Guaca Community Health Fair. And then we'll see you all again for a special meeting on February 9th at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much.
I had a quick question. The tax thing, did we, are we like advertising that or?
Yes, sir. We, the communications team put out a great release yesterday and I know that KXXV has already picked it up. You'll see it promoted on social media and on our website. And if you have any other suggestions, I know our, our communications team would definitely welcome the opportunity.
I just wanted, because I know like the area I deliver, they always ask me about it, when they're going to do it and, and because they.
Well, it starts today, so.
It was on the news this morning.
Yeah.
I would, I would get there early. We, when I was there, we had people lining up at one o'clock in the afternoon.
So, so my understanding, and Leo was really helpful with explaining it to me, is that there, you queue outside in the parking lot and they kind of take the, you know, come as, you, first come, first serve. And then they'll, they'll manage the line. They won't let it get too long for who they can serve every day. Okay?
I had one more thing to add. Region 12 is hosting a school board conference on March 24th and 25th. So if you need some additional continuing education hours as a school board member, we'd be happy to register you. There is early bird pricing. So if you let Monica know by February 24th, we'll get a, a discount on that. And then also I had a request from a board member for training records and we can, Monica can provide those to each of you so that you can check the status of where you're at. And then we are required to report those publicly. I think that's before the election, so I'll check the policy on that and will be in compliance, but we will be reporting that in spring. Most likely April.
Any more questions or comment? No. Meeting's adjourned.